Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the September 23rd, 2025 Select Board Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
With us tonight are Mr. Joseph Still, Mr. Jared Chadwick, Ms. Judith Whiteside, myself, Mr. Marcus Gomes, Town Council Rich Bowen, and Town Administrator Derek Sullivan will be joining us shortly.
And he will be remote.
Okay.
Yep, and I declare that there is a quorum present. Um, Mr. Still.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address this board on something that is not on the agenda? Mr. Day?
No, at this time.
Thank you. Announcements. Mr. Gomes?
There are no announcements at this point.
Thank you. Um, we'll do the proclamation last, under announcements. Mr. Still, any announcements?
I have none tonight.
Okay, I only have one. Do you have any other? The Boy Scouts sign up are at Saturday, the 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Aubashon Ace Hardware on Marion Road, welcoming kids or people from 11 to 17 years old. And there's a folder, there's, you've seen the signs all over town. Troop 39 has been in this town for I don't know how long, a really, really long time. And we had three Eagle Scouts graduate in the past year, so they're looking for some younger kids. So if anybody has an opportunity, let everyone know that that's what is going on. Thank you.
And I have a proclamation for Disautonomia Awareness Month. Whereas disautonomia is a group of medical conditions that result in a malfunction of the autonomic nervous system, which is responsible for automatic bodily functions such as respiration, heart rate, blood pressure, digestion, temperature control, and more. Whereas disautonomia impacts over seven million people around the world and includes conditions such as diabetic autonomic neuropathy, neurogenetic orthostatic hypotension, and postural orthostatic tachycardia syndrome. Whereas disautonomia impacts people of any age, gender, race, or background, including many individuals living in Wareham. Whereas disautonomia can be very disabling, and this disability can result in social isolation, stress on the families of those impacted, and financial hardship. Whereas some forms of disautonomia can result in death, causing tremendous pain and suffering for those impacted and their loved ones. Whereas increased awareness about disautonomia will help patients get diagnosed and treated earlier, save lives, and foster support for individuals and families coping with disautonomia in our community. Whereas Disautonomia International, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that advocates on behalf of patients living with disautonomia, encourages communities to celebrate Disautonomia Awareness Month each October around the world. Whereas we seek to recognize the contributions of medical professionals, patients, and family members who are working to educate our citizenry about disautonomia in the town of Wareham. Now, therefore, the Select Board of Wareham do hereby proclaim the month of October as Disautonomia Awareness Month throughout the month of October.
Thank you. To be honest, I had never heard of it before, so, yes.
Just acknowledge.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Is Russell Barry here? No. Jordan Gomes, yes. Could you step forward, please? How are you tonight?
Good.
Good, nice to see you. Have a seat, and have a seat, and introduce yourself into one of the mics that has a green button on it. And you're here as an applicant to the Wareham Cultural Council, right?
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chair, fellow board, staff members. My name is Jordan T. Gomes. I'm a lifelong East Wareham native. And as you mentioned, today I'm here to hopefully join the Wareham Cultural Council as a committee member, excuse me. And the opportunity to contribute to the growth and the economic growth of our town is very important to me. And as a, as a, you know, a regular native, you know, being able to grow up in this town and fortunate enough to, you know, be able to take in everything that we have to offer, it's easy to take it for granted, if that makes sense. And it seems only right to be able to at least contribute if I insist on being a part of this town. And, excuse me, I'm a little nervous, but, uh, yeah, I came across the opportunity and I'm eager to join, and I'm happy, and I appreciate any, any feedback that, and the leadership that you guys lead by example. So that has also inspired me to join the committee as well. Thank you.
Marcus, you were actually on the Cultural Council, right?
Yeah, I was on the Cultural Council. I don't know if you read on it.
I did, I did, Marcus.
Yeah, so I'm happy that you've, you know, taken the chance to come up here and, you know, you have, you want to be a part of it, basically.
Exactly, and I appreciate your leading by example as well. You definitely inspired me. I appreciate that, Marcus.
Thank you, man.
Awesome.
Any other comments or questions?
I appreciate your interest in this. This is phenomenal that a native is so passionate enough to get up here and speak with us, nervous or not.
Nervous or not, thank you very much.
Appreciate your willingness to do this, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Still.
You did fine. You're perfect. It is, it is the first time, it's hard.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that so much.
So, have you been, well, they had a meeting?
We did have a meeting last week.
Yeah, and did you go to that?
I was, I did attend, yes.
Excellent, okay. And were you overwhelmed? Were you underwhelmed? Were you thrilled? Were you, you know?
I was, I was actually very excited. And at first, like I said, I'm nervous, I'm nervous now, but it was very comfortable and the other.
The only one who bites on this board is.
Everybody better be pointing towards that one.
Every now and then it's good to be, you know, placed right and checked like that, of course. But no, no, all the other existing members were very welcoming, and it was a very comfortable atmosphere, so I felt like that was the place to be, for sure. And I felt like it's a great place to be able to contribute and join.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for stepping forward.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I have a couple more questions. Did you went through the high school, you went through the school system?
Correct, I graduated in 2009 under great facilitators like yourself, Madam Chair. I appreciate that, and I would, and that is.
If you're out of school, you don't need to suck up.
But, but with that being said, that is part of the reason why I'm able to be here today, so I do appreciate you so much, of course.
Oh, wow.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. And it doesn't, what do you do for?
My, my career in?
Police.
I'm actually a UPS driver, so it's, it's a, it's a long day.
Oh, wow.
But, like I said, I've been there for a while, and it allows me the opportunity to be able to take on other endeavors like this. So I've, I've established enough to be able.
Great, union, great.
It's, it's a great job, for sure. It's a long day, it's a great job.
Deliver here in town?
I was fortunate enough to start right, right out of Sagamore. My first route was right in Buzzards Bay Main Street. It led right into Onset, Mass Maritime, and, and I've just kept climbing the ladder. I was a driver in Martha's Vineyard for a summer back in 2016, delivered to Obama's Secret Service agents on a daily basis. That was fun, that was a good experience. And now I have a career out, a set route in Duxbury. So, but yes, I am a UPS driver by day, and I hope to be another crusader by night to fight for Wareham.
Awesome. That's great. Do you have any questions of us?
No, but again, I applaud and appreciate all the continuous effort that all of you contribute to our town. And, and again, leading by example is the reason why I'm here before you today and passionate enough to do this, so.
Thank you. And there are two vacancies on the council.
As I'm aware, correct.
Right, okay.
I believe there's one more opening that should be filled, but.
Yes, I think, yeah. Are you Jennifer Pena?
No.
No. Not you.
Oh, oh, oh.
Come on.
I was like.
Are you, no.
I just want to clear it up. 2025, you know, progressive.
So, we actually have it down here that you would be, you would be what I would call a short-term appointment, but I'm, Ms. Pena's not here, so I would sort of like to suggest that we put him in as an expiry date of the 20, of 2028 as opposed to.
I agree.
Is that okay with you guys?
Second.
Well, I didn't make a motion. Okay, okay, go ahead.
I make a motion to appoint Jordan T. Gomes as a member to the Wareham Cultural Council with a term to expire June 30, 2028.
Second.
Motion made a second, and to appoint is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Corbett?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. The paperwork for this, there's a whole bunch of things that you have to.
I, I believe I started the process, I'm not sure how much more along needs to be fulfilled or completed, but I'll be right on top of it.
All right, and so Nancy Baker will be reaching out to you.
Yes, yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much, just nice to see you.
It's so great to see you, too. Like I said, I appreciate you guys so much. Thank you again.
Take care.
Thank you, Madam Chair, fellow board members. Thank you so much.
Thank you. But, you know, no one ever gets out of this room without being asked what else they'd like to join. Where were you on that one?
He was good.
He was really good.
He won it. Thank you.
He should run for select.
Get in.
Yeah. Russell Barry, is he here either remotely or in person? Mr. Day, do you see Mr. Barry or Jennifer Morris Pena?
Not at this time.
Thank you. If they do appear, would you let us know, please?
I will.
Thank you. We have a 7:15 hearing and a 7:30 hearing. We can't call those hearings until it gets to be 7:15, so I would go to item 9A. Ms. Corbett, please.
So I read this?
Yeah, yes.
I move to request the Select Board Chair find the following letter's support for House Bill 2432, an act to reduce incidents and death from pancreatic cancer.
Second.
She's going to read the letter.
Okay.
To Representative John J. Lawn, Jr., Chair, House Committee on Healthcare Financing. Dear Representative Lawn, the Town of Wareham Select Board is writing to express our strong support for House Bill 2432, an act to reduce incidents and death from pancreatic cancer. Pancreatic cancer remains one of the most lethal forms of cancer, with a five-year survival rate of just 13% and limited early detection options. It is currently the third-leading cause of cancer-related death in the United States, and projections indicate it may soon rise even higher. Despite these sobering statistics, federal and state investments in research and public health initiatives aimed at prevention and early detection remain disproportionately low. House Bill 2432 is a crucial, nope, critical step forward in addressing this public health crisis by establishing a comprehensive pancreatic awareness, pancreatic cancer education awareness, and early detection program within the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. The bill aims to improve outcomes through better access to diagnostic tools, increased provider education, and support for high-risk populations. The Wareham community, like many others across the Commonwealth, has been affected by the devastating impact of pancreatic cancer. We believe that passing House Bill 2432 will help bring hope to families, improve early diagnosis, and ultimately save lives. We respectfully urge you and your colleagues on the House Committee on Healthcare Financing to report favorably on House Bill 2432 and advance it to the full House for consideration. Thank you for your leadership and your commitment to improving health outcomes for all Massachusetts residents. Judith Whiteside, Chair, Town of Wareham Select Board.
Second.
Motion made a second, and to authorize the Chair to sign that letter is read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to note that my captain, one of my cabinets just died from pancreatic cancer two days ago, so it is one of the most gruesome cancers I've seen.
Sorry about that. Okay, so motion made a second, and I, any further discussion? I will go for a roll call.
I will just say, too, I mean, this, this letter of support is also what 10 other municipal governments are doing right now between Dartmouth, Newport, Westport, Fairhaven, Essex, Millbury, Brockton, Warren, Liddell, and Bleacher Town. So all these people are coming together and putting this together for a great cause. There's a statistic out there, one in five family members direct line are affected by some form of cancer. So this is great. You have an eye for my vote, yes.
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 Okay, Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it is so. Thank you. Let's take a vote on the item C, if you will, please.
I move to ratify the vote taken on September 16th, 2025, to authorize the Town Administrator and the Select Board to negotiate pilot agreements with Alternate Power and Energy and 260 County Road Solar LLC, warrant Article 7 solar pilot.
Second.
Motion made a second, and to ratify the action that we took last week. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Yes.
And myself, aye, it is so. It is now 7:15, so Ms. Corbett, would you read into the record that we are going to open a hearing, please?
We are going to, yeah, open the hearing on the application from Dead River Company LLC, doing business as Robies Propane Gas, 878 County Road, West Wareham, for an above-ground storage tank use license for the keeping, storage, and sale of liquidified petroleum gas, LPG, ultra-low sulfur, and diesel fuel in accordance with provisions of Chapter 48, Section 13 of the Massachusetts General Law.
Is there a second to the motion to open the hearing? Motion made a second to open the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to open the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself, yes, the hearing is now open. If you are here to represent Dead River Company LLC, DBA Robies, would you step forward and identify yourself for the record? And you do have the green cards, yes. Why don't you just bring those forward before you sit down, please?
And I also have the license.
Yeah.
Your signature.
Okay, thank you.
There were two that weren't returned.
That's okay. You have the evidence that you tried.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. If you would identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm Michelle Fitzgerald, and I'm the manager at Robies Propane.
And can you explain what it is that you're doing here and what you're looking for, please?
So this is existing storage for our propane tank farm out back. When Dead River bought Robies Propane, we had to, we couldn't simply just transfer the license, it didn't go with the property, so the company had to apply for a new license. We've actually reduced the storage. When it was Robies Propane, we would have transports over there on the property, sometimes overnight if we couldn't fit the fuel into our tanks, 30,000 gallons, 60,000 gallons, those, that doesn't happen anymore. So we've actually reduced the storage by between 30,000 and 60,000 gallons.
I know that I had a question, or somebody had a question. The, the application is for one particular property, but there, there are other properties that used to have storage on them, is that correct?
No.
No? Or was it vehicles that were parked?
We used to have a second in North Carver. We had a diesel fueling station, but.
But nothing here in Wareham?
No.
Okay, all right. Any questions, Mr.?
Just one quick one. Why are you reducing the storage capacity?
Well, because now we have transports that just come in and drop off fuel, and it's more heavily managed. Before, like, they would order fuel and they'd sit in the driveway and they wouldn't fit in our storage facility, so they would leave the transport overnight until it would fit after trucks loaded that night or the next morning.
Oh, I see.
So, yeah, they have a much better grip on things, so.
Okay. None of the tanks had to be replaced?
No, they're brand, they're only, we just put that farm in like maybe five years ago, and they get inspected every year.
Okay. By who?
I believe the state comes in, waits and measures, yeah.
Okay, does the fire department also have to? That's onset.
Never mind. Yeah, yeah, they come in and do a property inspection every year.
Every year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, I will take a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing for the application of the Dead River Company LLC, doing business as Robies Propane Gas, 878 County Road, West Wareham, for an above-ground storage tank use license for the keeping, storing, and sale of liquidified petroleum gas, LPG, ultra-low sulfur, and diesel fuel in accordance with provisions of Chapter 148, Section 13 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Second.
Motion made a second, and to approve is read into the record. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Still?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Yes.
And myself, aye, it is so. You'll be able to pick this paperwork up tomorrow for Marie.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. We just need to double-check all of the paperwork.
No, I get it.
Yeah, okay. Thanks so much. Nice, you know, it's actually nice to meet you, because I talked to you on the phone, and I never have actually, I don't think, met you. I know.
And my parents are your kind of sort of neighbors. Fred and Chris, both my cabinets.
Oh, okay, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Well, nice to finally meet you.
Old homie here, sorry about that. Yeah, nice to meet you.
Great night, thank you.
You, too.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's go to.
Don't we have to move to approve?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
It's a good thing somebody's paying attention.
I move to approve the application from Dead River Company LLC, doing business as Robies Propane Gas, 878 County Road, West Wareham, for an above-ground storage tank use license for the keeping, storage, and sale of liquidified petroleum gas, LPG, ultra-low sulfur, and diesel fuel in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 148, Chapter 13 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Sullivan, can you start, we have a 7:30 hearing that I can't open until 7:30, so are you able to address any of the article, warrant articles?
Yeah, let's start in order.
Okay, let's do it.
Article 1 is approve and fund the FY '26 capital plan. So let you know with, with what, everything that's going on, we are not certain that we're going to have free cash or retained earnings certified in town, time for town meeting. Usually what happens is then you go to the, to the Springtown meeting, if you want to do any of the capital. The only item that I think is a really, it is a really big one that we're trying to get done is the Fearing Hill Bridge. Total cost estimate for that is 4.5 million, and that's with a 10% contingency. We've already set aside $1 million from certified free cash from last year. Senator Dooner has been good enough to secure his $100,000 earmark, although sometimes with the way the state budget is, those can be a, you know, you want to make sure that that's all, all taken care of before you expend it, but we really helped the, really, I mean, for getting that for us was amazing.
That's great.
So what my suggestion is to move forward if we have to with the borrowing authorization for 4.5 million, excuse me, for 4 million even. The reason why, I would rather have a little extra on that, just in case, so that'd be a total of 4 million borrowing, the 1 million we already have, and the potential of the $100,000 from the state budget. And so we'd move forward with that. Then what would happen is at the Springtown meeting, we would rescind the borrowing authorization and transfer that same amount of free cash. But why are we doing this with the two steps? It's to get the project going, which, as you all know, is an important life safety issue for our community.
Excellent. So we don't know whether we can actually do it, but recommending favorable action would be inappropriate.
I would, you know, I would say we're recommending it on this portion of what we'd be doing for the capital plan. And I've been telling the departments to basically, don't consider getting anything else from it, so we could move forward on just the borrowing for the Fearing Hill Bridge. If we do get it, I could always come back to you and the Finance Committee, but I think it's important to start the process for at least the bridge.
Okay, excellent. Number two, transfer of available funds?
Right, so the funds traditionally use free cash for this, and this is one you do for the stabilization fund. Stabilization fund currently has $5,441,166 in it. We've been getting good returns on that. That's, as I think I told you before, we're getting about 4 and 1/4 percent. With the recent change, we're going to be down to 4%. That's still pretty good, but it's in a, you know, rate-cut environment. We won't be getting as much return on our investment anymore. I'm just trying to see if, yeah, I think our interest credit monthly right now is about $18,400, and year-to-date, we're at a little over $128,000. So my recommendation is to keep us up with being a portion of the budget would be to transfer $250,000. And I'm telling you this even though we most likely won't have free cash, just so you understand what this means. I wouldn't ask you to take a vote on this, but I think it's important for everybody to know what we're doing here.
So you're saying do not vote it tonight?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Prior year bills and deficits?
I, I'm, yeah, I'm still going to go forward with, with some more information on this.
Okay.
They gave me some time to kill Judy. I'll kill it very well, so.
Oh, thank you.
So just continuing on that article, we have the, if you remember, we had Plymouth County representatives, including the commissioners, and this is part of their OPED, Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is the health that we offer, healthcare that we offer to our retirees. It's been a fantastic program. We currently have a little over $4.2 million in there. And the, I'll go through, the, the one-year returns are at 12, over 12%, three-year returns at over 3.26%, five-year returns at 9.3%, and the 10-year returns are at, are at 9.2%, which is fantastic. And if, I don't know if you remember from the last one, this is inclusive of extremely low fees, so it's, it's an excellent program for us. And traditionally, we're putting $300,000 a year into this. So think about it, we have grown very well, and the last quarter, excuse me, the last earnings for last month were a little over $91,000. So, and I wouldn't, if we were going for, the only other things we would do would be $100,000 to the benefits reserve. That's for when you have employees retire, any other retire, any other obligations you have for their, you know, vacation time or anything like that. It used to be when somebody retired, we would end up waiting months to hire somebody else because we didn't have the money in the budget, because you paid for the benefits buyout. So we've created this reserve, and we would put in a $100,000 to the grant funding matching. So that's what we typically do on this. So if I bring it up at a later date, you've heard it.
Excellent. What it really points out is that we have some superb fiscal management in this town, and have, that has grown over the years, and over the past 12 years, and it is a direct And it is a direct result of Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Foster and the team that they have put together. I think it's very important for the town to recognize that we were on the brink of not being fiscally healthy at all. And our bond rating is now double A plus, which is astounding and very much appreciated. And it keeps our cost of borrowing way down.
Yeah, obviously, our town accountant does an excellent job. And, you know, we take what recommendations come forward. You know, you're always going to get some sort of recommendations. You take the ones that are achievable and do them. So I appreciate all their help.
Do you have any prior year bills and deficits for Article?
None at this time.
Okay. And the PEG access receipts, can you just give us a number on that one?
Yep, so the number for that is in the, we actually put in the warrant this year. It's two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents. And traditionally, that's been put in the consent agenda. And basically, that's just a holding account to pay over to the, to Wareham TV, or the Wareham Community TV.
Thank you. Five harbor services permit receipts reserve?
Yep, so that'd be transferring a receipts reserve for appropriation account. And this could only be used for harbor service-related matters. And do you have a copy of Gary's email in front of you?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Is that the fifty for the boat? No.
It's the, hold on, we've already done it. There's two vehicles that we are going to purchase for a lease. It's a capital lease when we say that, so it means we own it at the end of it. So a little different than when you're thinking a traditional lease. So two of their vehicles he's replacing. Hoping, my word doesn't like to come up when I'm, when I'm zooming as well. So the total amount on this is sixty-eight thousand, three hundred. So this request would allow our department to fund the following needs. Vessel dockage is for the patrol and pump-out boat dockage at Private Marina, seven thousand, four hundred. Mooring and harbor service permit software contract, permit supplies for the 2026 boating season. So we have a yearly contract for the permit software company, which is excellent, helps out a lot. That's eleven thousand, two hundred. And then the vehicle for the purchase lease payment, four lease payments for two. So obviously, we're not paying all four lease payments on this. It's broken down into the, for two four-by-four vehicles with communications and equipment, meaning radios, all the equipment, the light bars, et cetera, that they need to do their jobs. The vehicles are replaced at twenty, two thousand and six, three-quarter ton four-by-four pickup and a two thousand and twelve, one-ton four-by-four pickup. Both vehicles have high mileage exceeding a hundred and eighty thousand. And just a sidebar, given that they're the Harbor Masters Division of Natural Resources, you know what sort of environment those vehicles are working in, saltwater environment, so. The two thousand and six three-quarter ton has significant frame and cab rot in which the repairs exceeded the value of the vehicle. This vehicle must be taken out of service for safety reason. The two thousand and twelve one-ton five-by-four pickup truck is similar, but we're trying to, we were trying to repair those. The cost we just got for the, to repair that one, because it's a diesel, we wanted to try and work with it, was significant. I think it was over twelve thousand dollars to repair portion of it, and then we had to do more. So I don't think that one's going to get into the, to be utilized. We'll probably have to sell that one off.
I'm, I'm going to put you on hold for a moment. I'm going to put you on hold. I'm going to ask that Mr. Stephen Baptiste step forward, as well as Chief Oswald and Chief Korea, please. Would you read and make a motion to open the hearing?
I make a motion to open the hearing for Peerview Restaurant Doing Business as Stevens Lounge, Stephen M. Baptiste, Jr., Manager, two oh one Onset Avenue, Onset, Mass. O two five five eight.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion to open the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Yes.
And myself? Yes. The hearing is now open. What I'm going to do, Mr. Baptiste, thank you for joining us this evening. I'm going to turn running the hearing over to Town Council, Rich Bowen. And then he will explain what we are doing and go forward. Is that all right with you, sir? Okay.
I'll start by reading the notice that went out to you. Dear Mr. Baptiste, you are hereby notified that the Wareham Select Board, in its capacity as a licensing authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September twenty-third, 2025, at approximately seven-thirty PM with the select, within the Select Board Meeting Room address to determine if an annual common victor or all alcohol license issued to Peerview should be modified, suspended, revoked, or canceled. The hearing is to be held due to reports of the Wareham Police Department and Onset Fire Department. The allegations are, one, that on August ninth, 2025, the occupancy load permit for your establishment was exceeded, basically more than a hundred. And number two, Wareham Police Department instructed all occupants to vacate the building, then re-enter with proper identification until maximum capacity was reached. See attached reports. You are expected to attend the hearing. You may be represented by council, and you may cross-examine witnesses and present any evidence on your behalf. If you have questions, contact the Select Board Office. Sincerely, Judith Whiteside, Chair. So what we'll start by doing is by swearing in any witnesses who might testify. Now, I think we have all three of you here. So if you just raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you very much. You are all, are all now sworn witnesses. So what, what I'm going to do is I'll just start by asking Mr. Baptiste, if he contests the, the charge. If he says he doesn't, then we can move on to other aspects of the hearing. If he does, then we go through the whole business of testimony and cross-examination and all that sort of thing. So, Mr. Baptiste, you've seen the allegations.
Yes.
Do you contest them?
No.
Okay. So, members of the board, that would be considered, for purposes of your deliberations, to be an admission, I hate to use the word guilt, but an admission of guilt as to the charges that were cited. And with that admission, there is no need for further testimony. However, because every hearing has two aspects to it. One is determining what facts occurred. We now have an admission as to that, so we can move along over that part. But the second part is always consideration of what, if any, penalty is appropriate. And because I think it would assist you in your deliberations as to what a penalty, what penalty, if any, is appropriate, I'm going to ask our two chiefs, maybe just to give a, a brief account of what happened, so that you have a, an understanding. And then we can ask Mr. Baptiste if he has anything he wants to add. And then we can, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair, so you can undertake the penalty phase. So I'd like to start with Chief for Onset Fire. If you could just give the board a, a brief outline of what you observed and what happened.
So before you do that, each of you, when you, before you speak, you need to identify yourself for the record, please. Thank you.
Jeffrey Oswald, Chief, Onset Fire Department. On the evening of August ninth, after the Cape Verdean Festival, I was on my way home. I received a call from Wareham Police asking me to go to Mr. Baptiste's business address due to a possible overcrowding. When I arrived, there was a large group of patrons in the building. I can't honestly say how many there were at that time. I had made recommendations to police administration to have the building emptied, and we would count the patrons as they come out to get a, a fair estimate of how many people were there. But given the amount of exits in the building, people had already exited the building. They're on the sidewalk out front, so it was hard to tell who had just left or who was waiting because we had had the festival earlier in the day. So after we did count, the number was in excess of one hundred. Their occupancy is eighty-eight. I can't say the exact figure above a hundred because I didn't count everybody that was in there. I can say Mr. Baptiste's granddaughter was very willing to empty the structure, recount, monitor the exits, and take precautions for any, you know, fire safety issues. For me, she was very understanding. She was upset that it had happened. She was more concerned about the safety of the residents above and the patrons. Other than that, we didn't have a, a negative interaction at all.
Well, we've heard from the red chief, now we get to hear from the blue chief.
Walter Korea, Chief of Police, Wareham Police Department. As Chief Oswald stated, and historically, at the end of the Cape Verdean Festival, there's always a large contingency of people leaving the area that tend to, tend to frequent that particular corner of Mac Anthony's and Peerview Restaurant. This particular evening, and, and I have to say that Mr. Baptiste has always worked with the Wareham Police Department during this event to, he's closed, in the past. He's closed at six PM just to help us clear out the, the Cape Verdean Festival crowd. And that's always been a big help. This particular festival, the club did remain open. And I was walking in the area, we had some other issues going on, but I noticed right away that the building, that the Peerview Restaurant looked like it was over capacity. And that's when we reached out to our fire partners for assistance. And I have to agree with Chief Oswald, there was no problem at all with the staff as far as listening to what we were trying to say, to get people outside so that we can do a count and then let them read out to.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Baptiste, did you have anything you wanted to say to the board?
Excuse me?
Is there anything you'd like to say to the board about?
No, it's about what the old chief said could be accurate.
Well, I, I know you feel bad about what happened. Why don't you tell the board a little bit about that?
Mr. Baptiste, could you bring the mic closer to yourself? I think it would be helpful, sir, because not everyone on this board knows the history of your community life here. You've been here.
Well, my name is Stephen Baptiste. I'm eighty-six years old. I celebrated it. I got a long history of licenses in the town of Wareham. I was a barber, a paratrooper. I went to barbering school. I got on the police department in nineteen sixty-one. I worked midnight aids, and I cut hair in the afternoons. I, in nineteen sixty-eight, I took a northeastern course, extension course. And I was the only one to pass the sergeant's exam. And so I was promoted to sergeant in nineteen sixty-eight. I still have a clipping upstairs in my, my apartment where the Sewer Service notified the town of Wareham that I was eligible, eligible to be promoted to sergeant. Sixty-two hundred dollars a year, but anyway. In, in nineteen seventy-nine, due to my herniated back and my other blood pressure and whatever, I got off the police department. I, and in October of seventy-nine, I purchased the, the Peerview Restaurant. I put three kids through Boston College, one through Worcester Polytech. He just passed away last May twenty-third. Sixty-two years old. He had ALS, and it just broke my heart. He, but anyway, we've been there forty-five years open. And I've been good to the town. I, Thanksgiving dinner, I have open houses, Christmas parties. Anybody needs my, my restaurant for a funeral, wake, or whatever, it's allowed. I just can't say no. And that's why I've been there forty-five years. And we have a good rapport with everybody, with the police, the fire. And I've always tried to do the right thing, and it's worked. Thank you.
I just have one question of Mr., yes. I believe you told me that you actually had hired three security personnel for that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Could you, could you confirm that you in fact did that?
I did, but I found out that they, they were useless.
But you did.
But they were there.
You did take, make an effort.
And they had a counter and all that.
Yeah.
I think that you, you saw these.
Yeah. But you made the effort to control, yeah.
Always, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? No, so, Madam Chairman, we have a, the charges, an admission, an explanation as to what happened. At this point, it would be appropriate to have a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing. And then the board can proceed to deliberate as to what penalty, if any, is appropriate and necessary.
Thank you.
I move to close the evidentiary portion of the disciplinary hearing for Peerview Restaurant Doing Business as Stevens Lounge, Stephen M. Baptiste, Jr., Manager, two oh one Onset Avenue, Onset, Mass. O two five five eight.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the evidentiary portion of this hearing. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Yes.
And myself? Yes. The evidentiary section is closed.
Madam Chairman, this is where the board would make a motion as to penalty, which can range, traditionally, under your, your board policy and under ABCC guidelines. This is, I believe this is a first offense in forty-five years. Usually, you only look back two years, but, you know, forty-five years. So that's something that you would take into account. And typically, under your policy and ABCC practice, usually something ranging from a, a warning to a couple of days of penalty is appropriate, depending, you know, on how you feel about the track record of the establishment and any admission or contrition shown as to the infraction that occurred, so.
Thank you. Should we close the hearing hearing before we do this, or should we? Okay.
I would move for, I would move to not make any penalty. I mean, he's a, he is a business owner of forty-five-plus years in the town of Onset.
And there's never been one complaint.
So are you suggesting that we don't even write a letter of caution, of warning?
I mean, if the warrant's necessary, if that's what.
If we need to.
Mr. Gomes?
I hate to play lawyer in situation like this, but I guess that's what I'm here for. So you're having a hearing, you do have an admission. If, if your inclination is to go lightly, and I'm gathering that's what it is, you know, certainly appropriate within, you know, what you've heard. You could say, you could say, you know, I move to issue a warning to the license holder to be more careful in future. And that would be sufficient to, to put it on record. There's no sanction, there's no suspension. That's typically how this sort of thing is handled.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to issue a letter of warning to be more cautious in the future. That motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so. Now we should close the hearing, am I correct?
No, you're done.
No, all right. What I'm, what I will explain to you, Mr. Baptiste, is I will write a letter to you. A copy of it will go to both chiefs, both the Onset Fire Department, as well as the Chief of Wareham Police Department. And that will be put in your folder in the office. There will be no further action at all.
And then forty-five years from now, you know, who knows?
Yeah. And I just want to say, thank you very much for attempting by hiring extra security to, to manage something that is always fairly difficult to control. And thank you very much for being the pillar of the community that you are.
You've been an asset to this community for a long time. I'm sorry we're here.
Thank you very much, sir. Yep. You're all set, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, I'm going to have you continue to do your thing.
Okay. We just finished up on the harbor service permits receipts reserved for appropriation. So it would be appropriate for someone to make a motion. I'm taking your job.
So moved.
What are we doing?
Yeah, what are you doing?
I don't know what.
No.
Harbor Services Permit Receipt Reserve.
Yeah, no, we, yeah, you said we're not going to vote on them right now.
Okay. That one's okay, if you can, because you're coming from Receipt Reserve for appropriation.
Okay, so, so we, you don't want us to do one yet?
Right, I'll tell, one you're not voting, well, one I asked you to vote on because we do the borrowing.
Oh, okay.
And if you make any changes, I'll bring that up later.
All right, so let's do one at a time. Can you make a motion?
I move favorable action on Article one, approve and fund the fiscal year twenty-six capital plan.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action to the town meeting. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Corbett and myself?
Aye.
Aye, it is so. And number?
Two, we are holding off on.
And three, we're holding off.
We're holding off on.
Okay, and four?
Or is available for a vote?
Is, is there a dollar amount for four total?
Yeah, it is right, it is in the article itself. Two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents.
Is that in your motion, Ms.?
Yes.
Corbett, is there a second?
Second.
To recommend favorable action to the town meeting in that amount? Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And me, myself? Yes, aye, it is so. Occasional reports, I'm going to accept a motion from Ms. Corbett.
Did you, did you vote on Article five?
Yeah, you missed five.
Oh, we'll do that one in a second.
Article five is coming from Receipts Reserved for Appropriation, so you can vote.
Yeah, what's the amount on that one?
Sixty-eight thousand, three hundred.
Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action in that amount to the town meeting. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. Occasional reports and motion, please.
I move to approve Article six, occasional reports.
Second.
So it'd be recommend favorable action to the?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
And seconded, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And myself? Aye, it is so. The solar pilot, I'm going to accept a motion on that one because we heard from Ms. Nichols last week.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article seven.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action to the town meeting. Is any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes? Ms. Corbett and myself? Aye, it is so. Easement, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, Article eight, I've got it on the screen.
Excellent.
This is, we need to pipe in a gas line to the vehicle storage building. Why do we need that? Why do we need that? We have some, like the Vector truck, which in the winter and extreme lows, you do not want those things freezing. It will break it and that's a very expensive piece of equipment. So with the upgrades to the plant and facility, this is one of them and we just need to get the approval for this easement, since it's technically an interest in property. It needs town meeting action. So you can see in the yellow up here is where the pipe is, where the line would be, and then it's right to that building.
Any questions? Motion.
I move to approve, to recommend favorable action on Article Eight, easement agreement with National Grid.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes.
Yes.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
And myself. Aye, it is so. Can you do the land taking, number nine?
Yeah, so as you know, the multi-use path is coming down Route Six, going right, right to basically where the town hall property is. So I'm showing you a sketch. There's a series of them. If you look at the, you'll see sort of besides the white shades, what's in sort of the grayed-out area, those are temporary easements. They'll be utilizing the space for what they need.
We can't see it, Derek. We can't see it. We see nothing.
Let's stop the share and see if we can start again.
Could you shut the light off? Do you mind? Thank you.
Yeah, for a second there, Derek. Who just came in to the meeting?
Looks like iPhone.
Looks like what?
Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
There we go.
Oh, good. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
So in the gray, that's the temporary areas. There's some things long, so this is trying the best way to, you know where Glenda Ave is? Glenda's over on, facing at the left-hand side, so you have those properties. And so when you see the green space, that's the beginning of town property, sort of on the opposite side of the Clements property that we purchased. So this is where a bunch of the work's being done. In the purple is a permanent taking, which I was trying to figure out, we're talking to him, it looks like there's some, they're going to remove and reset and do some, there's going to be some permanent fixtures there. So that's sort of the first section.
Yeah, the plan is actually in black and white that you're showing us.
Oh, okay, well.
Really? I thought I saw some purple.
I've got in color on my laptop, so. My extra screen, so.
Whatever.
It's the, are you sure that's in black and white? Does it show not got?
Unless it's like one of those things, is the dress yellow or is it-
It's just in this far left-hand corner, it's a slight shade of purple.
Maybe I have like canine eyesight and can always see black.
You gotta lean a little bit with it, there is a little bit of purple, but.
Anyway.
I'd be, I think Joey's the only one of the perfect age to actually see it. Is that what we're saying?
For record, I do see purple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's just an example. And along the way, we're going to lose some of the, some trees. You know, there's not much we can do. This is sort of their taking. I'll show you one more. I'm going to try and get a little, little bit closer to the, to where the house is to give you an idea of the-
So we need to recommend town meeting action because it involves town property.
Correct, yes.
But there's really nothing we can do about it except recommend it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are you still able to see, did it change over where it says State of Clements, Kathleen Clements right here?
Yes.
Okay. So this is, if you look, you'd see that some of, there's going to be some property grading. You'll see R E M is removal, so they will remove some of the bigger trees right along the front area. And then we will be demoing the house within probably the next month or so, so it's, I've been trying to get them to do it, but they're, they're not going to take on that one, so. And then basically you'll see the saw cut and goes right up onto town property. So we're going to have a nice walkway path and multi-part path. So because of the temporary takings and then the permanent, that's why we need a town meeting action.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll accept a motion then.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article Nine, Mass. Land Damage Agreement, including takings.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Gomes.
Yeah.
Ms. Corbett.
Yes.
Mr. Still.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Oh, Mr. Chadwick.
Yeah.
It is so. Do you have any others that you can speak to?
Yeah, if we fast forward to Article Nineteen.
Yep.
Budget transfers to see down, Town of Wode to transfer the sum of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from debt principal to debt short-term interest within the FY twenty-six budget as approved under Article Seven. So this isn't doing extra appropriations. This is taking from the debt principal line to the debt short-term interest. Why? You guys just voted on the, on the debt, on the award for the bonds and we're actually not going to have the principal payment in this fiscal year, but we will have that interest payment, you know, as we've been temporary borrowing as well. So that's why we're moving from one down to the other. So again, it's not an additional appropriation, just moving within the debt lines. And this was recommended by Mr. Foster.
I move to approve Article Nineteen, budget transfers in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand.
We moved to recommend favorable action.
Damn it. Recommend favorable action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action to the town meeting. Any further discussion on that motion?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes.
Oh, he was voting.
You guys are bad.
You did it too soon. You were like a half a second too soon.
You have any comments?
Yes.
Mr. Still.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Ms. Corbett.
Yes.
And myself. Yes, it is so. Thank you. Do you want to talk on twenty and twenty-one?
Yeah, let's see, and correct me if I'm wrong. This is coming technically from the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District. That used to be how we handled all of our solid waste, AKA trash. They still own the property in Rochester that we used to the transfer station. The town has leased it from them for essentially, I think it's a hundred dollars a year or a hundred and twenty or something like that, so it's a nominal fee. We, as you know, Mr. Menard and his staff, have done a tremendous job cleaning it up. I mean, it looks, I think it's probably the only transfer station you could eat off to the ground and not get sick, so. Our interest is if we're going to continue trash programs, instead of us putting money into an asset that the town doesn't own, even though we're ourselves in the town of Carver are one-half owners of this district now that, because Marion had bailed out, it's, I think it's important that we secure this land. What's interesting enough is we have the availability to be able to use the funds that the district has itself. We own basically seventy-eight percent of anything, any liquidity that comes out of that district, because it's based on, it's seventy-two percent, right?
Yes, seventy-two.
Seventy-two percent, the liquidity from that district. So we could actually acquire it with the funds in there at the seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and basically reimburse ourselves seventy-two percent of that as well. So we actually wouldn't need an appropriation. However, if the district chooses not to do that or to dissolve it, we have other funding mechanisms that we could do it with, including sale of real estate funds. So this is something we'd like to see if the town's interested in. I think it's important to secure that asset and if we're not, and if that's not going to happen, it tells us our future and what we need to start potentially doing on our own properties within our community.
So I can add to that. I sit on the board with Amanda Cobb and Dave Menard. They're three representatives from Wareham and three from Carver. Over the period of the past year, we've been discussing whether the district itself should dissolve, which you'll see on the next article, and whether in fact it makes sense to sell, to have the town of Wareham use the cash offset in the account to purchase this land. The only work that has been done and improvements that have been done on the property, which is in Rochester, have been done by our municipal maintenance department, totally at our expense and Carver has admitted to that. Carver uses, probably three hundred people in the town of Carver use the facility as opposed to approximately three thousand people in the town of Wareham use this facility. And the district itself is in favor of this. We acquired several, well, three different appraisals and then one assessment and we've agreed on a price of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Yeah, there was a fairly interesting range on them, going all the way up to over one-point-two million or something.
Yeah, it was-
On the appraisals.
Yeah. And we ultimately settled on the assessed value.
Yeah, so the, somebody's going to ask, is there twenty-one, have we done a twenty-one E site assessment? And the answer is yes, about five years ago. This used to be run by CMAAS as part of the agreement. And before CMAAS turned essentially the control back over to the district, they had to have a favorable twenty-one E. And there was one, it passed. And as part of the lease agreement, since the town's been leasing with it, it would have been our obligation anyways to clean up if there was any sort of spillage or anything. So there's no new liability for our town by taking this on.
So I recommend favorable action to purchase land. Article twenty.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action to the town meeting. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Gomes.
Yes.
Ms. Corbett.
Yes.
Mr. Still.
Yes.
And myself. And yes, and Mr. Chadwick.
Yes, you almost forgot to say yes.
Yeah, I know. I'm trying, yes.
I'm messing you up that bad.
I know. And then the next one, I can speak to that. The district has discussed over the past year and more recently at our last meeting two weeks ago, that we are going to put a non-binding question before our town meeting meetings, respective town meetings, to dissolve the district. The district's assets include a lot of cash, a lot of cash. So it makes sense from the district's point of view, because of the three hundred people in Carver who use the facility, the transfer facility, and the three thousand that the town of Wareham people use, it makes sense to dissolve it and to move forward. At one point, there were three, two transfer stations, one included in Marion, but when Marion left the district, this was what was left. So the town of Carver will be looking at that, a mimic, a mimic of this article at their town meeting, which I think is mid-October.
I have a question. Will Carver be paying fees to us to allow their inhabitants to continue to use the facility?
Yes, that's part of what Mr. -
That's how it works right now, is we do a twelve percent surcharge on it, because paying for the disposal, the bag is, you know, the bag is the cost. And then there's the overhead for utilizing the facility, which is what gets paid from the sticker itself, right? But then, there's a whole bunch of work that the town of Wareham does for that transfer station, which has nothing to do with trash stickers or, or the bags, you know, the work that myself does from the maintenance team outside of the ones there that are operating there, what the treasure collector's office does, sending out the bills, what the, what the, what do you call it, the town accountant's office, even I T, everything. So that's, right now, we've made a couple offers on how that would work, but it's, I could not see it happen without us charging basically a surcharge off of what the fee is for the, the sticker fee to utilize the station, which just wouldn't be fair to our residents. So that's a great question.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
I move to recommend favorable action on Article Twenty-One, the dissolution of the Carver, Marion, Wareham Refuge District.
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 Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action to the town meeting. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Still.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes.
Yes.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
And myself. Yes, it is so. Do you want to do the sewer air pumps? Quick explanation of that one.
Usually, yeah, those are who I hand over to, but that's the five air pump stations and wet wells, the pumping lift stations, so they want to make sure that they have those all upgraded and available. If any of our lift stations go down or our pump stations, as you probably know, it's a nightmare.